Dear students, welcome to ISE. Today's our discussion, SSE CCL CHSL La Baganga Quantitative Optics Session 6 Ne. I will discuss it. So see the first question all of you. A cricket team of eleven players is to be selected from a group of eight batsmen and seven bowlers. In how many ways a team having at least six batsmen and at least four bowlers are to be selected? So if you observe carefully here, we need at least six batsmen. We need at least six batsmen and we need at least four bowlers. So we need eleven players team. So if you take six, six batsmen out of eight batsmen. Six batsmen out of eight batsmen, eight six ways, eight C six ways. And, and remaining five players you have to take from bowlers, remaining five players you have to take from bowlers. How many bowlers are there? Seven bowlers are there and you have to take seven C five ways. So if you observe, six plus five, eleven players, yes? We are taking at least six batsmen and you are taking five bowlers. Here they mentioned at least four bowlers. Four can equal this kind of problem only. This is one possibility, yes? And another possibility, they given at least six batsmen, you have to take seven batsmen also, yes? ORR plus, so eight C seven, eight C seven and. So whenever you are taking seven batsmen, then remaining four players are from bowlers. How many bowlers are there? Seven bowlers are there and seven C four, seven C four. In this case also, all conditions are satisfied, yes? At least six batsmen are there, at least four bowlers are there, total eleven players are there. These are the only two possibilities. Is it possible to take eight batsmen? If we take eight batsmen, then bowlers are only three members. But we here, we need at least four bowlers. Only two possibilities are there. So eight C six, eight C six you can return as eight C two also, eight C two. Seven C five you can return as seven C two. Seven C two, yes, NCR is equal to NCN minus R. Eight C two, eight into seven by, eight into seven by two into one. Two fours are, four sevens are twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Seven C two, seven C two, seven into six by two into one. So two ones are, two threes are, seven threes are twenty-one. Plus, eight C seven, eight C seven will be equal to eight C one, yes, that will be equal to eight. Seven C four you can return as seven C three, seven C three. Seven C three is nothing but, seven into six into five by. So three factor is nothing but six. Six six get cancelled, seven fives are thirty-five, seven fives are thirty-five. Now in this one, in this one. So if you observe carefully here, seven it is common, yes? Seven man common this is called, seven common this same is not me keda? So four into twenty-one, eighty-four. Seven common this same is not me keda? So, five eights are forty, forty. So together is what amma? So one-twenty, so one-twenty-four, one-twenty-four into seven. So twelve, one-twenty-sevens are eight forty-seven, fours are twenty-eight, eight forty plus twenty-eight, eight sixty-eight. So your answer is what? Option D, option D will be the right answer. Let us lay eight to end the option only. Here seven and here four and, seven fours are twenty-eight, end with eight, only one option is there. Next question, Kalasi and Arya can complete a work together in eighteen days. If Kalasi completes two-third of the work in D days and remaining work is completed by Arya in D by four days. Then find the value of D. So here, together it will take eighteen days. It there Kalasi eighteen days put in the. Kalasi alone, two-third of the work in D days. And two-third of the work in D days will cheyali ante, whole work in D can equal days put in the. Hasstanga. And that D value one is, it there Kalasi neputte eighteen days put neputte. It there Kalasi chestne eighteen days put neputte, individual keches neputte, kastanga equal days avutindi. And my answer, eighteen can equal ondaali, larger value to try chaddam, larger value to try chaddam. So for example, D value in four, forty and these kunte, D value in forty and these kunte. So forty option to valtunna, answer emosno chudam. Kalasi alone, two-third of the work, ante out of three parts, two parts in D days, ante two parts in forty days. About total work content ama, three parts, three parts in sixty days, three parts in what amma, sixty days. Kalasi alone sixty days, Kalasi alone what amma, sixty days. Next to, second person ever amma? Second person ever, Arya. Arya put Kalasi two parts cheyadu, remaining ante one part untundi. So one part cheyani key, Arya can days puttunama, one part cheyani key Arya can days putni, D by four days putni. Manum D value em thesekunam, forty thesekunam, apur D by four ante ten days. One part cheyani ten days parthe, murt three parts cheyani can days parthandi, thirty days parthni. Ante Kalasi alone sixty days, Arya alone thirty days. Total work is sixty, total work is sixty, Kalas one unit and Arya two units. So together is nothing but daily three units, together is nothing but daily three units. And the total sixty, per day three, total it will take twenty days. Together it will take twenty days, kana mani kanta raval, eighteen raval. And my answer forty kadu, so forty thesekunapu twenty ochindi, chundhi. Forty thesekunapu twenty ochindi. But mani kanta kavali, eighteen kavali. And okasari me chusthe, forty low half ante twenty kada? Mera half cheyisintra de eighteen ante, half cheyikumun em ondaali, thirty-six ondaali. Ante manu thesekunapu option ante thirty-six. Option C will be the right answer. And the next option, next option, like check cheskuntu vellam, okay nama? Well forty satisfied ante, adha my answer, forty satisfied, kala dekata, dantae equate chesu senante. So your answer will be what? Option C. What value will come in the place of question mark? Simplification question. Okasari me chusthe, five table low, three seventy-five times puttunama, five sevens are five, five are, five seventy-five times three seventy-five. So next andi, four table, eight times puttunama, twenty times putundi. Eight threes are twenty-four, twenty plus twenty-four is how much amma? Forty-four. So forty-four go twenty-seven add chaste, seventy-one osundi. And seventy-one, seventy-one plus X is equal to X plus seventy-five. And X value emosnandi, minus four osundi, X value emosnama, minus four. E twenty-seven you other kampiste, seventy-one osundi. Seventy-one low nchi, seventy-five thesekasta, minus four osundi. Your answer will be option C. Ankit marked the price of an article at fifteen thousand rupees. If he offers a discount of eighteen percent days, then his profit would be twenty-three percent days. What is the cost price of the article? So market price itchunaru, fifteen thousand rupees, eighteen percent discount ichinapu ki ekuda, twenty-three percent profit osundandi. Discount is always calculated on market price. Eighteen percent discount is nothing but, remaining should be how much andi, eighty-two percent days. And eighty-two percentage of market price is equal to, eighty-two percentage of market price is equal to. So whenever you are giving eighteen percent discount, still you are getting twenty-three percent profit. So twenty-three percent profit is nothing but what amma? One-twenty-three percentage of CP. So one-twenty-three percentage of CP, profit is always calculated on CP. So here, MP they given, in place of MP, so you have to take fifteen thousand. So now we need to find out CP, we need to find out what amma, CP, we need to find out CP. So if you observe carefully here andi, forty-one twos are, forty-one twos are eighty-two. Forty-one threes are one, one-twenty-three, forty-one threes are. So three table, eight times puttunamadi, three five thousand times. Two into five thousand is how much amma? Two into five thousand, two into five thousand, ten thousand. Therefore, cost price will be what amma? Cost price will be option C, option C will be the right answer. Next question, in an examination, forty percent of the students passed in English. And fifty percent of the students passed in Hindi, while twenty-five percent students failed in both the subjects. If seventy students passed only in English, so find the total number of students who passed in both the subjects. So if you observe carefully here andi, here the data it is, while twenty-five percent of the students failed in both the subjects. Twenty-five percent of the students failed in both the subjects. If twenty-five percent failed in the, both the subjects. Here forty percent are passed in English, forty percent is are passed in English. So we go through Venn diagram, we go through Venn diagram. So common area data they given regarding failure data, twenty-five percent fail in English, in English, forty percent passed. Forty percent passed is nothing but, remaining sixty percent fail na? In entire English, sixty percent fail. Already common area twenty-five percent is there, then only in English thirty-five, only in English thirty-five. Coming to Hindi, total fifty percent students are passed. If fifty percent of the students are passed, remaining fifty percent is failed. Already, already in the common area, twenty-five percent is there, only in Hindi, twenty-five percent days, yes? Now, if you observe carefully here, total it is hundred percent days, total it is hundred percent days, total it is hundred percent days. These are the students who failed in either one subject or both the subjects. So total eighty-five. And eighty-five percent of the students, eighty-five percent of the students either failed in one subject or both the subjects. Therefore, remaining fifteen percent of the students are passed in both the subjects na? Are passed in both the subjects na? Passed in both the subjects, passed in both the subjects, yes, passed in both. Now here, what is the question? Here, they give one more statement, if seventy students are passed in only in English. Passed in only in English, thirty-five percent of the students failed in only in English na? So total, total sixty percent failed, total sixty percent failed. But thirty-five percent only in English failed, therefore remaining twenty-five percent of students. So passed in only in English na, yes? Total sixty, total sixty failed. Thirty-five percent of the students failed in only in English, failed in only in English, failed only in English. Then remaining twenty-five percent of the students passed in only in English na? Passed only in English na, yes, passed only in English na? That twenty-five percent is nothing but, how much they given amma? That twenty-five percent is nothing but, how much they given? Seventy students. If twenty-five percentage is seventy, then we need how much amma? Then we need how much? So passed in both the subjects, passed in both the subjects is what amma, fifteen percent days. So fifteen percent is how much? Five fives are, five threes are, five fourteen times, three fourteen times forty-two. Therefore, passed in both the subjects are how many amma? Passed in both the subjects are forty-two, option C will be the right answer. The ratio of male and female in a town with population six-two-four-zero is five is to three. If fight and females joined in the village, the ratio of male and female in the village becomes twenty-sixty is to X. Find the value of thirty-two minus X. So if you observe carefully here and all of you, five is to three, five is to three, five is to three. Male to female. Total eight parts na? Eight parts is nothing but, how much amma? Six-two-four-zero, eight, how many times amma? Eight sevens are fifty-six, eight eights are. So one part will be seven-eighty. Then five parts will be what? Five into seven-eighty, five-seven-hundred times three-thousand-five-hundred, five-eighty times four-hundred. Four-hundred plus three-thousand-five-hundred, three-thousand-nine-hundred. So three into seven-eighty, so three into seven-eighty, three-seven-hundred times two-thousand-one-hundred, three-eighty times two-forty. Two-thousand-one-hundred plus two-forty, two-three-four-zero, yes? Now, so these are the males and these are the females. Now, so fight and female joined in the village. Fight and females joined, so fight and females joined, then it become what amma? Two-eight-five-zero. No male extra join, then that should be only three-thousand-nine-hundred only. Then this ratio become what amma? So twenty-six is to X, twenty-six is to X. Now twenty-six, how many times amma? Twenty-six ones are twenty-six, remainder will be what? One-thirty, remainder will be thirteen, thirteen is thirty about one-thirty. Twenty-six five is are, and it goes exactly one-fifty times. So just divide this one with one-fifty amma, just divide this one with one-fifty. One-fifty twenty times will be what? Three thousand. So for three thousand, this is exactly one-fifty less. Therefore, X value will be what amma nineteen, X value will be what? Nineteen. Here they are not asking X value, so parapart amma nineteen bete is, bete is to. So they are asking thirty-two minus X. So thirty-two minus nineteen, thirty-two minus nineteen is nothing but, how much amma thirteen? So your answer will be what? Option C, option C will be the right answer. Question number seven, a boat goes seventy-five kilometers while going upstream and three hours, in three hours. And sixty kilometers while going downstream in two hours. Find the speed of the stream. So here, they are asking speed of the streams, speed of the stream is C. C is equal to how much amma, X minus Y by two. Here X is the downstream speed, Y is the upstream speed. Downstream speed, downstream speed. So first of all, downstream distance is how much amma? Sixty kilometers. Downstream distance is sixty kilometers, sixty kilometers in how many hours? Two hours. Sixty kilometers in two hours is nothing but, one hour how much amma thirty? Therefore, downstream speed is thirty. Now coming to upstream speed, upstream distance is seventy-five, upstream time is three hours. Therefore, upstream speed is how much amma? Twenty-five by two, by two. Thirty minus twenty-five, five, five by two, two-point-five. Therefore, speed of the stream will be what amma? Two-point-five, option D will be the right answer. So A to twelve, they given data interpretation. So if you observe carefully here andi, so this data I am going to return. So what data they given first? Total number of visitors they given, number of males minus number of females. Difference they given. So total number of visitors, total, total we need. And male or female, total male or female, just I am going to draw the diagram. So total. A, B, C, D and E. So total how many amma? Eight thousand, eight is eight thousand. Difference is thousand kada? A thousand subtract cheyandi, eight thousand lunch is seven thousand untundi. A seven thousand half off cheyandi. And the female, three-thousand-five-hundred, male gura three-thousand-five-hundred. Kana male oka thousand extra kada, male minus female kada? Male thousand extra kada? A thousand male catch cheyandi, four-thousand-five-hundred. Enchaasna nu, a difference un thesekastna nu. A remaining value half off chaasna nu. A difference editha untundo, adu male ikkuvaadu, male catch chaasna nu. Putchundhi, second one, twelve thousand. Difference antama four thousand kada? Difference anta four thousand kada? A four thousand thesee ending, twelve thousand nunchi, remaining will be eight thousand. Eight thousand half chaste, four thousand. Kana voda four thousand osundi, kana extra four thousand undu kada, total eight thousand untundi. Next to, seven thousand, C will be what amma? Seven thousand, C will be seven thousand. Now, four thousand kada, four thousand thesekasa three thousand. Three thousand half cheyandi, fifteen hundred. So fifteen hundred ante, remaining emosnandi, five thousand-five-hundred. Next to, fifteen thousand, D will be what amma? Fifteen thousand. So difference four thousand kada, a four thousand subtract cheyandi, eleven thousand. Eleven thousand half chaste, five thousand-five-hundred. So remaining will be what amma? Nine thousand-five-hundred. So ten thousand kada total? Ten thousand a difference antama? Difference anta three thousand kada, three thousand half cheyandi, three thousand thesee ending, seven thousand. Seven thousand half chaste, three thousand-five-hundred, remaining should be six thousand-five-hundred. So ante kana sarkat cheyedu, okay nama? A difference un thesee ending. So remaining na half cheyandi, half chesnani females keyundi, remaining ni male lo veyandi. Okay nama? So ipur mya questions easy ka pana answer cheyuchandi, see the first question all of you. So what is the first question here? The number of male visitors in stadium A is how much percentage more or less than the number of female visitors in stadium C? So male visitors in stadium A, four-thousand-five-hundred. And female visitors in stadium C, fifteen hundred. So four-thousand-five-hundred is how much more? Amma, epadene gutu betikundi, more or less ochupu difference thesekavali? Evatho aite compare chestamo, valan denominator thesekavali? Kada evatho compare cheasna nu andi, dan taravat evasna nu kara? So female visitors in stadium C, so fifteen hundred. That should, you have to take in denominator, okay nama? So compared person is always put in the denominator. Now whenever they are asking more or less, we should take difference. So four-thousand-five-hundred in male visitors in stadium A, so four-thousand-five-hundred, fifteen hundred, difference is what? Three thousand. So in fifteen hundred, three thousand is how much percentage? Hundred percent is fifteen hundred, hundred percent is fifteen hundred, we need three thousand. So your answer should be what? Two-hundred percent days, option D will be the right answer. So next question amma, just see the next question all of you. So what is the next question? Find the ratio of the number of male visitors in stadium C to that of female visitors in stadium E. So male visitors in stadium C, five-thousand-five-hundred, five-thousand-five-hundred. And female visitors in stadium E, so female visitors, three-thousand-five-hundred, three-thousand-five-hundred. So eleven table low, eleven, eleven table low pothu, five table low putundi, five-elevens are, five-sevens are. Five-elevens are, five-sevens are. Your answer is what? Eleven is to seven, option A will be the right answer. So next question chunnama. Find the average number of visitors in stadium ABE. So simply they are asking ABE average. Simply they are asking what amma? ABE average. Visitors they are asking, simply visitors, not male, not female, visitors. So twenty thousand, ten thousand, thirty thousand. Average is not, they are asking, average is nothing but thirty thousand by three. So thirty thousand by three is nothing but what amma? Ten thousand, option D will be the right answer. Next amma, find the difference between total number of male visitors in stadium B and D together and the number of, so female visitors in stadium C. So B and D, male visitors, B and D. So B and D, eight thousand, so nine thousand-five-hundred, together is what amma? Seventeen thousand-five-hundred, so together is seventeen thousand-five-hundred. And stadium C, female visitors. Stadium C, female visitors are fifteen hundred. So difference is what amma? Sixteen thousand, difference is what amma? Sixteen thousand, option C will be the right answer. So next question amma. The price of tickets for female visitors in each stadium is two-hundred rupees each. Find the difference between the revenue generated from the stadium B and the revenue generated from, generated from stadium E by selling tickets to female visitors. So BE, female visitors. B female visitors are four thousand and E female visitors are three-thousand-five-hundred. So difference they are asking, difference is how many tickets amma? How many visitors? Five hundred visitors. So five hundred visitors, each visitor, so money is how much amma? Two-hundred. So five hundred into two-hundred, so five hundred into two-hundred is nothing but, how much andi? One lakh, therefore difference is one lakh. So next question amma, thirteenth question. A man covered fifty percent of his journey. So with the speed of twenty-four kilometer per hour and while the remaining journey at the speed of thirty kilometer per hour. The total time taken to cover the whole journey was nine hours, then find the total distance covered. So first fifty percent is under remaining distance andi. And first half distance, remaining half. Distance is constant, here distance is constant. Whenever distance is constant, speed, here two types of speeds are there. First a half sini, some speed is there and another half sini, another speed is there. So that is the reason how to take average speed. Whenever distance is constant, so what is the average speed amma? What is the average speed? Two into S one S two by S one plus S two, whenever distance is constant, yes? So first a half sini, twenty-four kilometer per hour, next a half sini, thirty kilometer per hour. So divided by twenty-four plus thirty, so two into S one S two by S one plus S two. This is what average speed, this is what amma, average speed. They are asking distance na? Distance is nothing but what amma? Speed in two time, speed in two time. So here in place of speed, you have to take average speed. In place of speed, you have to take average speed. Average speed into time is nothing but distance. Here time is nothing but, how many hours amma? Nine hours. So speed into time is nothing but distance. If you observe carefully here, nine ones are, nine six are. Nine six are fifty-four, six fours are twenty-four, six fours are twenty-four. So two into four eight, eight into thirty, two forty. Therefore, distance will be what amma? Two forty, so distance will be two forty, option C will be the right answer. Hundred ml of mixture A contains milk and water in the ratio of five is to three. Respectively, is mixed with thirty, thirty ml of mixture B containing milk and water in the ratio seven is to five. So find the ratio of milk and water in the resulting mixture. So here, total how many parts amma? Five is to three, eight parts na? Eight parts is nothing but hundred, then each part will be twelve and half. So then five parts is nothing but what amma? Five into twelve and half. So five into twelve and half is nothing but sixty-two point five. Next to, three into twelve point five, thirty-seven point five. In the first vessel, milk is sixty-two point five, water is thirty-seven point five. Are you clear andi? So total eight parts, eight parts is a hundred. If eight parts is a hundred, one part will be twelve and half. Five parts will be sixty-two and half and three parts will be thirty-seven and half. So milk and water. Another container is mixed with thirty ml of B mixture. So how many parts amma? Twelve parts. Twelve parts is nothing but thirty amma, twelve parts is nothing but thirty, then each part is two-point-five, yes? So each part is two-point-five, milk is how much amma? So seven parts, seven into two-point-five, seven, two-point-five times is how much amma? Seventeen point five. And water is how many parts amma? Five parts, five into two-point-five, twelve point five. If you mix these two varieties in a single vessel. So total milk is how much amma? Total milk is eighty, yes, eighty. So sixty-two and half and seventeen and half, eighty. And the total water is how much amma? Fifty, total water is how much amma? Fifty, so eighty is to fifty, then ratio become eighty is to five. So your answer is what amma? Option B, option B will be the right answer. Next question, ankit purchased two units of same item at same price. Cost prices are same. First he marked sixty percent above its cost price and sold it at fifteen percent discount. Second was marked forty percent above the cost price and sold it at X percent discount. If the overall profit percent is, error rate is seventeen percent days, then what is the value of X? So here, overall, average profit percentage itchadu. Average is seventeen, then overall it is what amma? So total profit and it is what? Thirty-four, total profit will be what? Thirty-four. Average is seventeen and one article, average is seventeen, then here total two articles na? Seventeen into two, thirty-four, overall profit should be thirty-four. Now, so two articles, cost prices are same. First article, cost price I am going to assume as a hundred. You are printing sixty percent above the cost price. Sixty percent above the cost price is nothing but, market price is how much amma? One-sixty. Here you are allowing fifteen percent discount. So fifteen percent discount is nothing but what amma? Twenty-four. If you subtract twenty-four, so SP, SP should be what amma? One-thirty-six, SP should be one-thirty-six. Therefore, profit is how much amma? Cost price is hundred, selling price is one-thirty-six, therefore profit is what? Thirty-six percent days. But overall profit is what? Thirty-four percent days, so total profit is what? Thirty-four. And the second article, kastanga last case manu sales cheyali. Enta percent last sales cheyal amma? Two percent, thirty-six nunchi, two subtract chestna, thirty-four osundi. Second article, we should sell that article for two percent last. Now, if you observe carefully here andi, second article, cost price is also hundred because both the articles CPs are same. Cost prices are same. If a cost price is hundred rupees, then market price, then market price. So forty percent abona, forty percent above is nothing but, how much amma? One-forty, forty percent above is nothing but one-forty. Here, last is two rupees na? Two percentage na? Last is two percentage na? Two percentage ante, last two percent ante, selling price emavali amma? Ninety-eight rupees avali. Second article, when two percent last ostene, manu overall ga, total profit anedi, thirty-four percent osundi. Okay nama? So okasari me chusthe all of you, one-forty ninety-eight. And aenta discount avali, forty-two rupees discount avali. So if forty-two rupees, then mean discount avali amma? One-forty mini avali. So forty-two is how much percentage of one-forty? So in one-forty, ten percentage is forty, ten percentage is forty. So fourteen threes are forty-two, yes, thirty percent days. So on second article, you have to give thirty percent discount. Your X value will be thirty percent days, option C will be the right answer. An amount under simple interest become seven times of itself in eighteen years. The same rate of interest is applied on the amount of fifty-four thousand for three years under compound interest. Find the total sum obtained after three years. Three years taravat, total amount adutunadu, so total sum obtained. First of all, we need to find out rate of interest, we need to find out rate of interest. So here principle we don't know amma, in simple interest principle we don't know, we assume as a hundred. So hundred become seven times, seven times is nothing but seven-hundred, seven times is nothing but what? Seven-hundred. In this seven-hundred, principle is hundred. Therefore, interest is how much amma? Six-hundred, interest is how much amma? Six-hundred. Six-hundred rupees interest in how many years andi? Eighteen years. And eighteen years is six-hundred rupees ante, chundhi. So six-hundred rupees in eighteen, eighteen years ante. One year kentosundi. One year, rate of interest is always calculated for one year. So six-hundred by eighteen, so six-hundred by eighteen and entosundi, thirty-three point three-three osundi. Thirty-three point three-three percent osundi. And a one-third osundi, entama? One-third, entama? One-third osundi. All of you clear andi? So now, if you observe carefully here amma. So now, by using this one, you have to calculate compound interest. In compound interest, how much principle you are depositing? Fifty-four thousand rupees. So on this fifty-four thousand rupees, one-third, rate of interest is what? One-third. So one-third is nothing but what amma? Eighteen thousand, one-third of fifty-four thousand is eighteen thousand. If you add eighteen thousand, it will become what amma? Seventy-two thousand, seventy-two thousand. So on this seventy-two thousand, again you have to take one-third. So one-third of, so seventy-two thousand, twenty-four thousand. So twenty-four thousand plus seventy-two thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-six thousand. So on this one, again you have to take one-third, again you have to take one-third. So if you observe carefully andi, so three, how many times amma? Three thirty-two times, three thirty-two times. Thirty-two plus ninety-six, one-twenty-eight, so one lakh twenty-eight thousand. And after three years, so your amount become what amma? One lakh twenty-eight thousand, option A will be the right answer. A group of, a group consists of seventeen persons. When a boy joins the group, then the average weight of the group decreases by point five KC. If the average weight of the group after joining the boy is nineteen point five. So then find the weight of the boy, okasari careful ka chundhi. After joining the boy naru. And a boy joining taravat, nineteen point five ennta. Asal boy joining taravat, injari gindi, average weight injari gindi, point five taggi gindi. Boy joining taravat, average weight point five taggi gindi. Boy joining taravat, group weight to nineteen point five anta. And a boy joining avakumundu twenty-untundi kada? Boy joining avakumundu twenty-untundi kada? Boy joining taravat, oka point five tagutundi kaavati, remaining will be nineteen point five. All of you clear andi, remaining will be nineteen point five. So okasari me chusthe all of you, remaining will be nineteen point five. So ipur manu, boy joining avakumundu twenty kada? So ipur manu kavalsun nandante, weight of the boy, and a kottaka joining twenty, weight, tanavika weight kavali manu. So okasari me chusthe, okasari me observe chesthe, taggi gindi kaavati minus chestna nu, okay nama? So minus, so ipur seventeen persons unar amma? Seventeen persons unaru. So oka, oka boy addayadu ante, mattham entamundu avtar amma? Eighteen members avtar. Oka-oka, enta tagutun amma? Point five tagutundi, enta tagutundi, point five tagutundi. So weight of the new person is equal to, so twenty minus eighteen and half. So eighteen into half ante, entama nine, so nine kada? Twenty lunch, nine thesekasta, entama eleven KC. And a weight of the new person, and a kottaka joining twenty, personika weight entama eleven KC. So your answer will be what? Option A, option A. Induku overall ga weight taggi nante, takku weight unattenu addayadu kaavati, group ke, apur overall average kuda tagipendi. Okay nama, eleven KC attenu tagipodan karnam enti, previous average twenty. Twenty, weight una twenty, oka, oka group ke.